Good evening, everyone. I'm walking to Harrisburg City Council Legislative Session. Today is Tuesday, November 13th, 2018. I'm calling this meeting to the order at 6:02 PM. Mr. Petrowski, please do the roll call.
Mr. Allitt, Ms. Bowers.
Present.
Ms. Daniels.
Here.
Ms. Green.
Present.
Mr. Mattson.
Here.
Mr. Majors.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Here. And Mr. Allitt is excused for tonight's meeting. Moving on to the identification, Mr. Majors.
Just like for us all to, at this time, just take a moment of silence for the victims of the wildfires out in California, and also as we're entering into the holiday season, that we just be mindful of our, all of our friends, family, and loved ones. So, at this time, just ask for a brief moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Majors. Moving on to pledge allegiance, Ms. Ballard.
(inaudible). In the United States of America, and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Ballard.
Yep.
Moving on to communications tonight, we have a presentation by Singor Mans from the Harrisburg Housing Authority regarding our summer youth program. Kurt, did we do it 15, and we did it 16, 17, 18? That's four years. Okay.
(inaudible). Come on out here. Enjoy.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
As mentioned, my name is Singor Mans. I'm the Chief Executive Officer and President of the Harrisburg Housing Authority. With me, to my right, is Clarence Watson, who is the Program Director for our Summer Growth Program. We also refer to it as our Environmental Teen Corps. And to his right are two of our teens that are going to talk a little bit about their experience. What we've handed out to you is a summary of our success this summer. We, as you know, or at least some of you know, we try to provide a summary of our outcomes, if you will, for our summer program. We have, again, I'm going to give you a little bit of education for those that have not been a part of this kind of meeting or presentation, but we're going into our fifth year, or we actually just had our fifth year of our Summer Growth Program. Our program started five years ago with 25 kids. Twenty-five teens through the ages of 13 and 16, from 13 to 16. It was a program that has been funded through the Environmental Advisory Council and obviously through the host funds that were graciously provided through the council and through the mayor's office. With that small seed of dollars, we actually had 25 children, 25 teens, and we did a host of things for four weeks during the course of that first summer. It has now grown from 25 kids or teens to 100 teens. This year, we had 100 teens enroll. We had 225, over 225 applications. The program has gone from four weeks to six weeks. The program has expanded itself into areas that have, quite frankly, we didn't anticipate. We have an on-track program now that Mr. Watson made, he'll talk a little bit about, in which he's allowed these kids, especially the older kids, to start looking forward to going to college or going to a trade school through a module-based program that sequentially and incrementally has them start thinking about the way in which the path to college and, most importantly, or as importantly, how to go without having a debt load at the end of your two or four years in college. And so, with that, I just wanted to, before I introduce Mr. Watson, I just wanted to say, we've had a fabulous year. We believe that this is a program that has actually consequences that we probably will not realize for years to come. We can see some of the immediate benefits, some of them you see right before you right now. I can tell you that Ms. Jure, who is to Mr. Clarence Watson's right, has been sending me her report cards for the last three years.
Wonderful.
And her report cards show, in no small measure, that she is an honors student. And I know it because she sends them to me. So, and I will also say this without putting her business out in the street, so to speak. At one point, there was a question about whether or not she was going to be able to stay in the program. It is absolutely remarkable. I mean, it makes me feel heartwarming, warm to the heart, to know that this young lady is actually showing the promise that we knew that she had. She just had to have somebody like Mr. Watson, like this program, like her mother who's sitting back there, and other adults in her life, like the mentors, to say, "No, wait. You got what it takes. Let's go this way instead of that way." And now, you know, I asked her, you know, "What do you want to be?" She said, "I want to be a lawyer." I said, "Okay. Now it's time to help you achieve that." Right? So, as you'll see, there's some budget information in there as well. We do absolutely appreciate the money that you provide to us. The money that you provide, 100% of those dollars go to the stipend for the kids, for the teens. None of that goes to the other costs. I would say they're ancillary, but they're not because they're significant costs. The program costs almost two, a little over $235,000. That difference between what the city council, or the city of Harrisburg has provided us and what it actually costs was actually borne by the housing authority as a contribution, if you will, to this particular cause that we feel very passionate about. So, with that, I'm going to let Mr. Watson talk a little bit about the program specifics, and then we're going to, of course, hear from the folks that really we should be listening to, and that's the teens.
Okay. All right. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Can you all hear me?
Good evening.
First of all, I'd like to thank, you know, thank the city and the housing authority for providing this opportunity for our kids. You know, I do a lot of things in the city. I have my own flag football league. I coach volleyball, and I do many things, but, you know, this program has grown to a point where it's different. And the effect that it's having on our children, on our teens, is profound because every year after the program, I have the kids, you know, write a 200-word essay about what they thought of the program. I mean, I said, "Just be honest. Just write it down." You know, they're not looking at other people's papers. And there's a common denominator is that everything's based on behavior. I'm a true believer that if you could behave, everything will fall in place. I mean, you need that. And I always looked at it as the crust of a pie. You can't bake an apple pie without the crust. So, if you have good character and good behavior, which we use the seven habits to incorporate that from day one, and the seven habits of highly effective teenagers has been like the catalyst of our program. And as it's grown, as Mr. Mans said, we've attacked different areas now. First, it was, you know, even in their reports, when you read what they say, they'll say, "Well, I just came in, you know, just, we thought we was going to pick up trash and eat at different restaurants." And they said, "That's not the case." They said, "It's not even about the money anymore. It's about friendship, so being able to socialize, being able to go to different companies and learn different companies." And just the, you know, just the atmosphere that we present to them is incredible. And as we've grown this year to 100 teens, well, we had 14. We call them mentors now because we have college kids and educators coming on board. It used to be that we had to go look for them. Now, you know, we had over 20 applicants applying for the mentorship program. And it's all about leadership. And with that leadership, I truly believe that with our leaders, they can go ahead and teach our kids how to lead. And this program this summer has been incredible. You know, it was a new challenge, going up to 100. I remember you said, what, 150, whatever, up at, I'll never forget that of the rookies. But as we continue to grow, I'm enjoying every second of it. You know, just to see, Jure's been in the program for, what, three years?
Yes.
Video, three years, right? And just to see how they've grown and how they're carrying what they learned in our program to go ahead and in school. So, hopefully, what they do is contagious, and it affects other kids in the school district so we can have a better school district. And when he's talking about the on-track program, they don't know it, and they don't know it right now, but, you know, you guys, but when we came in like three years ago, it was kind of just starting. And we're the only program around here. All these schools are, all the schools that are involved, they're not even close to being around here. But now, they're providing a $10,000 scholarship in addition. I mean, only if you're part of this program, if you completed it for two years. $10,000, $5,000, and the $2,500 scholarship to the kids who are in the program. So, they have access to this money that no other kids would have access to. And it's a free program, and kids have been doing incredibly well. It's a program where it's supposed to take a whole year for the kids to complete, but our kids get it done in a six-week, in a six-week period. So, not only do they accomplish well, but they work hard and get it done in a short amount of time. So, with that being said, I wanted to play a rap that one of our kids made, and I'll let, God, sorry about that. One of our kids did over the summer. I saw a video of, because we have so many talented kids, and I saw a video of them rapping. I'm like, "Man." I said, "These guys are pretty good." You know, a couple of things in the video, I was like, "Ah," you know, but the words. And they were just rapping at the reservoir park out the south. I said, "I'll tell you guys what." I said, "This is on a Tuesday." So, I said, "On, I said, "If you could put together a rap about our program by Thursday, I give you both $50." They go, "What?" They're like, "Oh, you didn't say nothing but a word." So, I said, "Seriously, I need that by, you know, the presentation, our dinner, I mean, our luncheon." So, Wednesday, came to say, "Watson, man, we need to get in the studio, man. We need $50 to get in the studio." So, I said, "You need $50 to get in the studio?" They said, "Yeah, we need to get in the studio." So, I said, "Here, get in the studio." They came up with the rap on that Thursday, and we actually played it on, played it at the banquet, and I wanted to play that for you guys after, once they get it set up, I'll let them speak, and I'll get it set up so you guys can, we'll just end it with that rap. It's incredible. They talk about the seven habits, talk about cleaning up the streets. It's, I said, "You guys are going to be big by speaking and rapping about something very positive." So, I just want to end with, thank you for giving me the opportunity to run the program. I enjoy it. How have you missed a day and five years, you know that?
I love it.
Perfect attendance. Anyway, we're going to let Jure, you know, one of our teens, go ahead and speak. Go ahead, Jure.
It's on.
It's on.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jure, I-10 John Harris. And to speak about the Environmental Teen Corp, it was most, the best thing that happened to me during those summertime. Yes, I got in a little trouble and got kicked out, but I'm thankful for Mr. Mans and Mr. Watson for giving me another chance to show them that I can prove myself to them and how much it meant to me for them to let me back in. The Environmental Teen Corp helped me not only by just making me a better person, but making me better to other people. Before the program, I didn't like really talk to other people. If I didn't know you, then I just left it like that. But now, as I see other people, they sit alone, I go sit with them, talk to them. I like to mingle more, make new friends, and I'm just open with everything and everybody now. And actually, the on-track program helped me throughout my 11th grade school year, which I'm going through right now. It's helping me during my business class. Some stuff I already learned from my on-track, I completed it. It was fun to me. I completed it before the program was actually over. And it was fun. It helped me with a lot of stuff. It made me understand how college was going to come to me, how I was going to be in college and everything that was going to come with it, and how to maintain my money. The Environmental Teen Corp made me open to more foods, even though I didn't want to try them. Some of the restaurants were just outrageous. But they taught us how to tip, how to, like, proper restaurant etiquette, which tools that we'd learned, which tools to pick up at a point in time. It just made me grow as a person, and I think it made me a better person to what I am today. And I'm thankful for it, being here. And I wish I could do another year, but I know my time has come, but I will be coming back when I start attending college.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Leonard, and I go to Saffy Tech, right down the street. And like, my ninth grade year, we had this thing, we were doing on-track. We had a business class, and I already learned this stuff, so I was like, "It's coming easy." So, I'm like, I don't know what to do. So, I felt on-track. Mr. Watson introduced that to us, made it like so much better, and like helped me out in school. So, I kept like 100 in that class, best performer in that class. And I feel like that. Mr. Watson, making this program for all of us, keeps most kids out of the street, because I'm in the summertime, I'm only playing the game or like just chilling in the house. But now, I see all my friends outside in this summer program, picking up trash. Most kids are like, "Are you picking up trash for money? Like, that's dumb. You getting paid at the end of the summer?" I'm like, "But it's cool, though, because like, I learned how to be a leader." And like, when I first came, I was all like quiet, and I didn't really talk to people. I was like, "Now that I'm like a leader, I can help people." So, if I see my littering on the street, I'd be like, "Hey, man, pick that up," because like, I have to clean that up in the summertime sometimes. It's like, "Man, I see like all this, how dirty it is. I'm like, "I'll clean this up." I cleaned it up regardless. I don't even need the money, to be honest with you. So, I feel like with Mr. Watson giving us the opportunity to pick up our money, I can like just do, I can do whatever I want by myself. I can be a leader in the street and be what I want to be the voice of Harrisburg.
Wow. Wow. Thank you. Thank you both so much.
And I'll end with the song here.
That's okay.
Yes.
Is that okay?
Yeah, go ahead. Your presentation, your time.
Wasn't that cool?
That's wonderful. That is wonderful.
So, as Mr. Watson said, we are eternally grateful for the support of the city, for the support of the council, for the support of the mayor's office, for the support, quite frankly, of the residents of the city of Harrisburg, because we're, in a way, invading their space at times. And they've been very gracious. Folks have come out on occasion and offered water and things like that for our teens. So, thank you all. We hope to continue this. I don't know if we can do more than 100 teens next year. It's a lot, but we'll try to do our best.
Pardon me? You need your own building. Harrisburg Housing?
We're working on it. We're working on it. We're working hard. Are there any questions that anybody has for us?
Well, first of all, I am just totally elated to hear how successful the program is. I never doubted you at all for one, you know, minute that this was not going to be successful. I just commend and thank all of you for your vital role that you have undertaken for these, to change the lives of these young people. And I just want to say that I pledge to all of you to continue to support you in any way I can. I mean, I knew from the beginning that it was going to be rough with Mr. Watson. We had some concerns. I had a lot of phone calls. Ms. Tisha's sitting there, too. Her mother, Jure's mom. But I am so thankful that Jure has turned about, and as well as you, to turn your life around. I understand that you did a lot with the, you know, children this year. I witnessed some of the things that they've done, and so I can just say, I just commend all of you and thank you for partnering with the city of Harrisburg to undertake this program, because it takes a lot of patience, cooperations, and understanding to deal with young minds.
Got a great leader here.
Yes, great leader.
Mr. Watson.
Yes. Anyone else?
I don't have any questions, per se, but I just wanted to say thank you very much for your presentation. And to you participants, thank you for sharing your stories. A lot of the questions, I guess, that I had are answered in your report, so thank you for sharing that.
You're welcome.
I'd just like to echo Ms. Wanda and Ms. Bowers here and say thank you. You guys are truly a blessing to our community. I know some of the young people have went through your program, and just to see their growth and, most importantly, their pride in their city makes a big difference, because when we raise children who have pride in their city, they really bring a lot to the future of the city. They help to make it grow and the great things they do, they stay here and do. So, it's very important to us. So, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to echo what my colleagues have mentioned. You know, from a community economic development standpoint, your best investment is in your workforce and in your youth, most especially. And soft skills training, essentially what a lot of this gives, is really critical for people in their early parts of their development. So, with these lessons, I think they're going to be great, really successful, as they continue on through their careers. The only question I had is that, I know we've talked, Singor, about the Harrisburg Promise Program. Is there any coordination with there to make sure that they get enrolled in that in any way?
Yeah, so that's going to be part of the evolution of the program. So, I didn't want to make this extra long as a presentation, because a lot of folks don't know the other areas in which the city and the Harrisburg Housing Authority collaborate. One is also the Harrisburg Promise, which is a college-bound program for teenagers, actually, kids going into seventh grade and then all the way through to high school, in which if they complete the program successfully, they end up having free tuition to HAC. The Harrisburg Housing Authority, the city of Harrisburg, and HAC, well, actually along with Steel and High, High Spire have also collaborated in this endeavor. And so, one of the things that we're looking at is now bringing in our teens from the Summer Youth Program to be a part of that Harrisburg Promise Program. So, that's the next evolution. You're getting out ahead of some of them.
Yeah. Well, as you know, when I went to the Harrisburg Promise, and then when I spoke at this initiative's event as well, you know, the UN released a report saying that there's deep poverty within the United States, and there's increasingly lax of opportunities for people that are in a poverty-type situation, and that's a huge part of our population. And these programs are ladder out of the poverty that doesn't really exist in a lot of other parts of the United States. This program is all my support, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Majors.
I think, I'll echo my colleagues' sentiments and say, "I'm just glad to see the youth here that are engaged in trying to make our community better each and every day, and look forward to them becoming, them and their colleagues and counterparts, becoming the next, the future leaders of the city of Harrisburg." So, thank you for what you do to help cultivate their minds and their civic involvement in city Harrisburg.
Ms. Daniels.
The same, let's echo the comments of my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you again. It says, you know, "It takes a village to raise our children," and thank you for being part of that village, playing a major role.
Literally, it's our pleasure.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, young people. Moving on with our agenda, courtesy of the floor. Anyone who would like to come to the mic, please do so now. I will start with my right. To my right, if you'd like to come to the mic. Okay. Oh, okay. That's all right.
Bo Brown, 1944, Swatara Street. I just, I just want to say that, you know, despite, you know, in the past, you know, some disagreements, I appreciate that everyone seems like you guys are working together with the administration and council, and things seem to be going really great with the state. And I hope that that maintains. I hope that you guys keep that up, because it's only going to be successful for all of us, regardless of where we see each other on the political spectrum, personal, professional. I think that it's, and I know that was election time, you know, there's, before election, there were a lot of people here. After the election, no one's here. You know, that's how it goes. But I do want to say that I appreciate it, and I hope that you guys can keep it up.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Thank you. Anyone to the middle? Anyone to my left? Okay, thank you. Moving on, approval minutes. Council members, proof of the legislative session minutes of October 23rd, 2018. Are there any omissions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none. Minutes are approved as such. Moving on, reports of committee. Report from Chair Allitt on the work session of October 30th, 2018. Mr. Allitt's not here tonight, so it's excused, and he will give his report at the next session. Moving on to report from Chair Green on the work session of October 30th, 2018. Ms. Green, are you ready with your report?
Yes, I am. In public safety, we won over Resolution 84 of 2018, which is a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and to enter into a lease agreement between the city of Harrisburg as a tenant and UMPMC, Pinnacle Harrisburg, excuse me, Pinnacle Hospital, as a landlord. It was, it's for the lease of office space at 1,000 Paxton Street owned by Pinnacle Health. The office space is 140 square feet. It's a room that will house up to six officers. Traffic Safety Unit, they won't all be in there at the same time, probably one to two officers at a time. The Traffic Safety Unit will be given 11 parking spaces for use at the location. They will also have use of the garage bay where they can conduct investigations on motor vehicles. The vehicles will not be left unattended or stored there overnight. It's a full gross lease, which means Pinnacle is paying for all of the utilities and taxes except for the phone and internet. And IT has been in discussion and is working with Pinnacle on getting the phone and internet services set up. The lease is a dollar a year, and it will automatically renew yearly unless it's terminated within 60 days of expiration of its current term. Pinnacle is also providing Traffic Safety, Traffic Safety Unit with a desk, credence, and filing cabinets, and a refrigerator. Traffic Safety will take some of their additional furniture with them, and Pinnacle is, they're willing to do this because it allows police presence at their building, so it makes them feel more secure as well. So, that's everything. Those are the highlights.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Green. Moving on from report from Chair Williams on the work session of October 30th, 2018. Administration Committee held a meeting at the work session on October 30th, 2018. Six candidates were on the agenda to be considered for various boards, commissions, and council for the city of Harrisburg. The six candidates were Clem, and forgive me, Mr. Anna, Anna Kubo, Byrie. Okay, I said it pretty good. To serve on the Building and Housing Co. Board of Appeals. Mr. Wayne Martin, who is employee of the city of Harrisburg, to serve on the Tri-County Regional Planning Commission. And it's for a two-year term. Ms. Molly Cheetum, to serve on the Environmental Advisory Council. Mr. Charlie J. White Jr., who is also an employee of the city, to serve on the Coordinating Committee and as a alternate for the Technical Committee of the Harrisburg Area, of the Harrisburg Area Transportation Study. And then again, Mr. Wayne Martin, to serve on the Technical Committee of the Harrisburg Area Transportation Study. All council members were present, and they were presented with a copy of each of the candidates' resumes. And at the end of the two-minute session where the candidates gave an overview, there was no additional questions at the work session. As the chair of the Administration Committee, I would like to recommend all of the candidates for appointment to the various boards, commissions, and council, and I respectfully request an affirmative vote from my colleagues. And that's the end of my report on the chair from the Administration Committee. We move on to ordinance for first reading. We had none. We move on for ordinance for amendment. We had none. We now move on for ordinance for final passage, which is Bill 14, 2018. Mr. Petrowski, please read that into record.
Bill 14 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Allitt, seconded by Ms. Williams. It's an ordinance of the Council of the City of Harrisburg, Dolphin County, Pennsylvania, to authorize indirect incurring a non-electorative debt through the issuance of a revenue note in the maximum principal amount of $2 million for the purpose of providing funds. One, to fund a capital project consisting of street restorations, repairs, and improvements; and two, to pay cost of issuing the note or any other, any or all of the same, stating that realistic cost estimates have been made for the capital.
stating that realistic cost estimates have been made for the capital project and stating the estimated project completion date, stating the realistic estimated useful life of the project for which the note is issued. Authorizing and directing the proper officers of the city prepare, certify, and file the required debt statement and barring base certificate, and directing city officials to file such statement and barring base certificate, together with a certified copy of this ordinance and proof of publications with the Pennsylvania Department of Community Economic Development, to pay any necessary filing fees, governing that the city shall include the amount of the annual debt service with respect to the note and its budget for each fiscal year, authorizing the proper officers of the city to contract with the bank or bank and trust company for its services, a sinking fund depository-paying agent and registrar, providing for execution, delivery, and authentication of the note and the disposition of the proceeds thereof, sending forth a substantial form of the note. Warning such note at a private sale by negotiation and stating that such sale is in the best interest of the city, creating a sinking fund and appropriating annual amounts for the payment of debt service on the note. Authorizing and directing the proper officers of the city to do all things necessary to carry out the ordinance. Authorizing, directing the proper officers of the city to pay issuance costs. Authorizing incidental actions, repealing all ordinances inconsistent herewith, and stating the effective date.
Okay. Council members, are there any questions, comments on Bill 14?
Just wanted to make a brief comment, just for clarity purpose, because I know, because it says a lot there, but it's really, and solicitor correct me if I'm wrong. So this was just us cleaning up a piece of legislation, ordinance that the city had previous, that we had, as some council previously adopted for a $2 million loan for, through the Pennsylvania Infrastructure Bank for improvements in South Harrisburg. That's correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so I just wanted to make it clear that.
Yeah, this was previously passed.
Yeah, this was previously passed.
The language just needed to be a little bit more robust. So we're back here again, passing the same exact $2 million loan, the same interest rate. It's 2.125 percent, same terms, everything's identical.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, please call the vote, Mr. Petrowski.
Mr. Allot, Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Bill 14 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 76.
Resolution 76 of 2018 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by, it's a resolution appointing Clem Anukabiri to serve on the Building and Housing Code Board of Appeals of the city of Harrisburg.
Say his name again for me?
Anukabiri.
Anukabiri, okay, okay. Any questions or comments, please, on Resolution 76? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allot, Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 76 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 77.
Resolution 77 of 2018 was moved by Ms. Daniels, seconded by Mr. Majors. It's a resolution recommending the appointment of Mr. Wayne S. Martin to serve on the Tri-County Regional Planning Commission for a two-year term.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allot, Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 77 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 78.
Resolution 78 of 2018 was moved by Ms. Daniels, seconded by Mr. Majors. It's a resolution appointing Ms. Molly Alchita to serve on the Environmental Advisory Council.
Any question or comments on 78? Please call the vote.
Mr. Allot, Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 78 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 79.
Resolution 79 of 2018 was moved by Ms. Daniels, seconded by, was moved by Ms. Daniels, seconded by Mr. Majors. It's a resolution appointing Mr. Charlie L. White Jr. to serve as a member of the Coordinating Committee and as an alternate member of the Technical Committee of the Harrisburg Area Transportation Study.
Any question or comments, council members? I do have a question, Tiff. Could you tell me how many people serve on this Technical Committee?
Are you talking about hats?
Yeah.
It's one primary and one alternate for each individual committee. And I believe there's two committees that we participated in.
Oh, okay.
So two primary members and two alternates.
Who's the other alternate?
I'm sorry.
Do we have another alternate?
Yes. So for the Technical Committee, the alternate is already Wayne Martin, I believe. Is that correct? And then for the Coordinating Committee, the alternate is Jeff Knight. They were previously appointed.
Okay, that's what I was, okay, so.
This is replacing, when Jackie Parker left, she was serving on it. So this is just sort of backfilling her positions.
So Mr. Martin is on the Coordinated Committee, and then he's on the alternate for the Technical Committee?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that right?
That's how you.
He's on both committees.
Oh, he's primary on both?
Yep, and Charlie is primary on one and Jeffrey's primary on the other. And then they alternate as the alternate. So there's actually two primary members and one alternate for each.
Okay, okay. Just like to see the next time there's a position, I mean, there's a spot open. I'd like to see someone else instead of our, using our city employees as was stated at the work session. So I wanted to make sure that's on record, that we don't continuously keep putting all of our city employees on these committees, okay? Any other questions or comments, council members? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allot, Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 79 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 80.
Resolution 80 of 2018 was moved by Ms. Daniels, seconded by Mr. Majors. It's a resolution appointing Mr. Jeffrey Knight to serve on the Technical Committee of the Harrisburg Area Transportation Study.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allot, Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 80 passes.
Moving on to Resolution 81.
Resolution 81 of 2018 was moved by Ms. Daniels, seconded by Mr. Majors. It's a resolution appointing Mr. Wayne S. Martin to serve on the Coordinating Committee of the Harrisburg Area Transportation Study.
Any questions or comments, council members? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allot, Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 81 passes.
Thank you. Now move on to Resolution 84.
Resolution 84 of 2018 was moved by Ms. Green, seconded by Mr. Majors. It's a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate, enter into a lease agreement between the city of Harrisburg as tenant and UPMC Pinnacle Hospital as landlord for the use of the property located at 1,000 Paxton Street, Harrisburg, PA, for the Bureau of Police Traffic Safety Unit.
Any additional questions on Resolution 84? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allot, Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 84 passes.
Moving on to Resolution 86.
Resolution 86 of 2018 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Ms. Bowers. It's a resolution ratifying the approving of the 2019, 2020, or 2020 collective bargaining agreement between the city of Harrisburg and local 521 American Federation, State, County, and Municipal Employees District Council 90.
That would be placed in Administration Committee. Moving on to Resolution 87.
Resolution 87 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Majors, seconded by Ms. Green. It's a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a collection agreement with the Harrisburg School District for the collection of the business privilege and mercantile tax and amusement tax for the 2019 tax year.
That would be placed in Budget and Finance Committee. Moving on to Resolution 88.
Resolution 88 of 2018 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Ms. Bowers. It's a resolution appointing Mr. Josiah O. Yonker to serve as an alternate member of the zoning hearing board of the city of Harrisburg.
That would be placed in Administration Committee. Moving on to Resolution 89.
Resolution 89 of 2018 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Ms. Bowers. It's a resolution appointing Mr. Aaron N. Holt Esquire to serve on the zoning hearing board of the city of Harrisburg.
That would be placed in Administration Committee. Moving on to Resolution 90.
Resolution 90 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Majors, seconded by Ms. Green. It's a resolution approving the preliminary final subdivision and land consolidation plan submitted by Bonnie Foray to subdivide a portion of the property at 1715 Marlborough Street and consolidate the subdivided portion with the property at 205 South 17th Street.
That would be placed in Community and Economic Development. Moving on to Resolution 91.
Resolution 91 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Majors, seconded by Ms. Green. It's a resolution approving the preliminary final subdivision and land development plan submitted by Gary Zimmerman on behalf of the United States Department of General Services to construct a new multi-story federal courthouse building.
That also would be placed in Community and Economic Development. Moving on to Resolution 92.
Resolution 92 of 2018 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Ms. Green. It's a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional service contract with Maverick Strategies for strategic guidance and intelligence gathering for lobbying-related services.
That would be placed in Administration Committee. Moving on to Resolution 93.
Resolution 93 of 2018 was moved by Ms. Daniels, seconded by Ms. Green. It's a resolution ratifying a contract with All Year Sports Galaxy LLC for the rental of an ice rink and related equipment for the city of Harrisburg's Second Annual Ice and Fire Festival.
That would be.
Commercial lot, parking lot at the Wildwood Drive, L2 and 2A, tax parcel ID number 1007100.
And that would be placed in Community and Economic Development. Resolution 95 is going to be pulled, so we'll move on to Resolution 96.
Resolution 96 of 2018 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Ms. Bowers. It's a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate, enter into a professional services contract with Marathon Capital Strategies LLC to continue to serve as the city's limited-purpose financial advisor.
That would be placed in Budget and Finance Committee. Mr. Lee O., business council members? Any new business council members? Okay, Mr. Majors?
No, Ms. Green.
Okay, Ms. Green first.
Sorry. I just wanted to recognize Harrisburg police officers. They are taking part in a no-shave initiative. It started October 29th, and it'll be going through January 7th. The officers will make a $30 donation, which the donations will be given to our daily bread. The officers will not shave during that period of time. And female officers can participate by wearing nail polish and makeup during that time. Also, throughout that time period, they'll be collaborating with Central PA Food Bank to do turkey deliveries to victims of abuse and domestic violence, as well as those having hard times in church organizations to help feed the homeless. So I just would like to recognize them for continuing to serve our community in every capacity that they can.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Mr. Majors?
I guess while I'll piggyback off of Ms. Green, there's, with the holidays coming up, and, you know, we always know that there are families in need within the city of Harrisburg and our surrounding community. There are a few individuals from our community that are going to be hosting holiday giveaways and turkey drives. So just wanted to make a couple of those announcements. There are three of them on the 17th. So Chris Handels Franklin from Harlem Globe Trotters is holding a, his Second Annual Turkey Drive at Camp Curtain. That's 2135 North 6th Street from 11:30 to 2:00 p.m. If you want to register, you can register at handelfoundation@gmail.com. Additionally, Jordan Hill, former Seahawks and Penn State alum, will be hosting, his foundation will be hosting a turkey giveaway at 10:00 a.m. on Saturday the 17th, starting at 10:00 a.m. at 1010 Orchard Drive. And then Danny Lanzana, former NFL player, will be hosting a turkey drive for his foundation at 11:00 a.m. at 2205 Swatara Street. And lastly, there will be a turkey giveaway at the Boys and Girls Club on Hanover Street. That'll be on, that'll be on Thursday, the 15th, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. So just wanted to make sure that members of our community knew that if you are a person that may be in some need, that there are members of the community that are looking to provide help during this holiday season to our residents and the community. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Hearing none. Oh, Mr. Matz?